Welcome to FPB's Meet the Candidates. This Cable 10 series allows you, the viewer, to get a closer look at our candidates and how they feel about issues that are important to our community. This is all leading up to the general election, where early voting begins on October 13th and goes till Election Day on November 3rd. So for our interviews, we took questions from the community via email and social media. We're going to talk about the shakeup in city government, how COVID is affecting our community, confronting social injustices on a local level, and much more. So it's a lot to talk about. So we need to jump right in. Let me introduce today's guest is Catricia Waldrich. She's a candidate for City Commission, and I'm just going to turn it over to her and let her talk about herself.
Oh, wonderful. Well, I'm Catricia Waldrich. I am your City Commissioner. We have been Commissioner for 18 months, I guess now. So, super excited. I have had the honor of serving you, and it's been a pleasure of mine. Excited for Frankfurt. So those that may not know me, I am a single mom to a wonderful 17-year-old boy, Jason, and a young 10-year-old, Josiah. I am very active in the school system. I also am part of different clubs around the area. I'm most proud of my membership in Delta Sigma Theta sorority incorporated, which were the women that was placed at the end of the suffrage march 100 years ago. But we stood strong and still fought for the rights for women's votes. I'm excited. There's so much more. I've only given two years for a term, so I'm excited to be here to run for reelection for another two years to get some more things done, and maybe go back and correct some things that haven't been done correctly and continue on with moving this city forward.
So why did you run for City Commission in the first place? And why do you want to continue to be on City Commission?
Yeah, so Kathy, the reason why I ran and I shared in previous interviews from last year is, you know, I just got to the point where I felt like there wasn't a lot to offer my children here. There wasn't a lot of choices. We weren't growing. It seemed like a very stagnant community. And so it was, instead of moving away from it and not doing my part, I felt like before I could just pack my bags up and move my children and relocate and give another place a chance, I needed to do all that I could as a resident and all that I could as a person to give back to my community and try to make it the best that I could. So the only thing left was to run for a public office and to help with that. And within City Commission, it is helping with the ordinances, it's helping with the policy, it's working with staff, it's working with residents to do and treat their community the way that they want it treated and to continue making it a better place. And so why do I want to run for reelection? Some may say I'm crazy. But I truly have really enjoyed it. I have enjoyed becoming family with a ton of people here in Frankfurt. Our family has grown tremendously because of my office, but I enjoy getting to know, talking with every single resident and speaking on their behalf. I am a, I'm serving to be transparent, as that's what the community wanted. I will continue my transparency. And I'm one that really don't like to take no for an answer, but let me do a little bit of research, I'll get back with you. But it's a fight to do the right thing. We are nonpartisan, as you know, in this race, and it's time to take the political stuff out of this nonpartisan race. And it's time to do what's best for Frankfurt and not what's best for people personally.
Okay. Well, since we last spoke, the Commission fired our City Manager, Keith Parker. So my question is, why can't Frankfurt keep a City Manager on a long-term basis?
Wow, that's a big question. Do we have enough time for that one? No. No, I, you know, I think when you look back over the years and when we have lost City Commission, and I can really speak from me being City Commission now and just looking back over the years, because I really wasn't involved in those years. But we always say, you know, when things continue to happen, what's the common denominator? And one common denominator is our mayor. And so I will have to say, I voted for Bill May in years past, I'd have to say. But now getting to work with him one-on-one, it truly has shown me what type of leader he is in government. You can be totally different people. You can be a wonderful man at home and a husband and a father and all these things, but some areas may not match you. And so in order to run for office, you know, you're running for mayor, and that means you have to read the job description that comes with that title, as I've done with City Commission. And if you want power and you want to be in charge, you have to choose the right position for you. You have to read your job description. And I think that within, within the times that we've lost so many, the mayor has really just wanted power. And within that, he sees powerful people coming in, supporting them, and wanting to... I'm in the middle of an interview. And one, I apologize, we're home, right? We're home with kids, I'm sorry. And so with moving forward, I mean, it's just, it's a power struggle. And it's just not the place for him. He's been here too long. And I think pushing people off because he's not allowing them to have their own identity, or if they do have an identity that does not include him, or they came up with this huge idea, it's like, how dare you? And it's okay if someone comes up with a better idea, or it doesn't involve you at first. You're the mayor. Sign off on the document, kiss and love babies, and let's try to move some things forward. But when you have a city manager running government, you need to understand that government. And one thing with Cindy, I thought Cindy was wonderful, and everyone's not going to be perfect, Kathy, by all means. But it's a strong woman. She came in and she did her thing, and she was bringing in money and making moves in Frankfurt. And I feel that the mayor, in the way that they're treating me now in the situation of City Commission, that he's threatened by strong women who stand up for themselves and know what they're doing and know that we're professional enough to move the city government, and we really don't need him at the moment to be able to move forward. And he's, and I think that that's a struggle for him. And I think he thought Cindy was going to come in and be a yes woman and do whatever it is. And she wasn't that woman. I speak to Lexington people all the time, and they were so impressed with Cindy, but she's not here. And now we have Keith. We went with a homegrown man who loves Frankfurt, who has family and friends here, and now all of a sudden there's an issue too. But it seems like every issue they throw out to say why they fired him, "Come on, Kathy, really? There's not a reason. He just didn't want to play the book by your book." And it's just too much. But I'm hoping to change that.
Well, we talked about the, you know, we do have a City Manager form of government.
Yes.
So what are the advantages of that form of government? And is that something you support? Or do you think Frankfurt should look at something more like a Mayor Council plan?
You know, I guess in saying which direction do we go and which is best or better, really you have to make sure you have the right leadership. Right? So right now, we are basically, if we were in a mayor form of government, and I sort of say we're in a mayor form of government now because we're underneath of the emergency, right? So the mayor has his whole thing, whatever he wants to do, he can do. And so now we see where that's getting us right now. Maybe if we had a stronger mayor, it may be suitable for Frankfurt. There are ways right now with Frankfurt and the county, the city and the county, we can merge in areas like fire department and police and parks. There are areas that it's truly beneficial to merge so we can be stronger and more resilient and thriving for our community. But I think you have to have the right leaders in order to do that, and they can't have a mindset of just politics. It has to be a mindset of your community.
Okay. Well, we're going to be looking for a new City Manager. So how do you think the City Commission should handle that? The search and hiring? Should the current mayor in City Commission move forward with the hiring process? Or should they wait and let the new City Commission, new city leadership choose the City Manager?
Well, absolutely not. The City Commission now and myself, we should not make that decision. That decision is, should be a lifelong decision on however long that profession is going to be held by that person. I do not think that with four, we're at four more months, I think, until the end of the year and basically almost two months until Election Day, that they should be making any kind of big decisions. And I'm including myself, however they have their three votes, we all know that. But I think that it should wait till the next Commission for them to come in, see what we need. And for me personally, I liked Keith. He's doing well. And there is nothing in Keith's record, there is nothing in Keith's thing to say that he should not be City Manager. He should be City Manager. And I think that that should be one of the first things coming in, the new Commission, that we should put Keith back where he belongs, and we should fix the ordinances and things of that nature that keeps these things from happening and re-change what Bill May and them has continued to do over the years and let ordinance to be the way they are. Change them where they're helpful and where they protect people like Keith from politicians like Bill.
Okay. Well, obviously, this has been a hot-button issue in our community. And troubling for some. So if elected, what would you suggest the City Commission do to boost public confidence in city government?
Oh, wow. I think first of all, just transparency. And I think we should definitely look at some of our ordinances of our meetings. You know, at this time, our, our community really does not trust our entire Commission or our mayor right now, because we continue to isolate them in meetings and not letting them have a say in too much. And then when they do have a say, you know, as long as the Commission has the vote, you can change it however you want, right? So for me, I think it's truly having meetings with our community, allow them to speak their voice and work with them where they see their voice, their ideas coming to fruition, right? And not waiting. Dolly Graham, for example, Kathy, you know, we've had our eye on Dolly Graham for a while. I get that the community don't have faith in the Commission and don't have faith in anything happened to Dolly Graham, because we are continuing to wait. It's time to make sure that we're doing all that we can to move forward and really take their ideas and put them out on the table and make them happen. And stop having all these meetings after meetings and bringing in people, writing down things, but never getting back with the community and doing things. And it's time to do that. And I think with the Commission that we have coming up, I think with the people that we have running, I think we're going to have that. And I don't think that that's going to be a problem. But we do have to make sure that the ones on the Commission now, some of them, and the mayor, since they're gone, we don't have to worry about that. We just have to make sure we get the right ones on the ballot this time.
Okay. So would you support the appointment of a Citizens Advisory Committee who would be tasked with identifying opportunities to improve the function of city government, including the structure and the roles and responsibilities of both elected and appointed managers?
Oh, absolutely. I'm okay with a community advisor committee. And to be honest, Kathy, I know I've spoken with you on several times in the community. I'm about my community. And to be honest, every decision that I've made in the last 18 months, I have really called, I've called different people. I've called Republicans in our community, I've called Democrats in our community, I've called independents in our community. I get the community's opinion on different things, even things I may not know or understand. I call those people to get the information. So an advisory committee, I would be okay with that. I think we need to have a little bit more knowledge of things that go on this city rather than just holding a seat and becoming City Commissioner and meeting twice a month. Maybe we can meet more often. Maybe we can have other meetings with our, with that advisory committee that can come in and actually have a say. You know, I feel that two meetings a month, maybe that's not enough, and a lot of things get, you know, just pushed under the rug and we forget about it unless the Commissioner has a passion and they want to bring it back up. But I also think that coming in as Commission, which I will bring it and hope that I do get back on the Commission, but even if not, I would like to submit that every single Commissioner needs to have a board to be responsible for, to go and attend meetings and follow up with them. And they also need to have different community projects that we support, like the senior citizens, the homeless shelter, the women's shelter. We each need to make sure that we hold responsible for one of them so we can have that connection and know what they're asking for. Because a lot of these communities, like the women's shelter, you know, like Bill read through their proposal and he cut them money. Why would any mayor cut our women's shelter money when they're struggling? But maybe it was written wrong and he could have suggested, oh, why did you ask for less? But it was just a confusion. And I think if we have Commissioners that work with them, it really would alleviate a lot of miscommunication in our community.
Okay. Well, we'll move on to our next topic. As of this week, Franklin County has more than 500 positive reported cases of COVID. Do you feel like the city leadership has taken an effectively aggressive role in helping our community slow the spread of the virus? And is there anything more that you think the city can do?
Well, yes. And you know, I hate it and, you know, just sending love to those that have lost loved ones here in Franklin County across the state in America, definitely. It's been a horrible time. And yes, our numbers continue to rise. And I know for a while, I just spoke with Emergency Management the other day, and we had about four or five weeks where we fell flat. And the reason why that number continued to grow was our numbers at Kentucky State University were growing. So it wasn't so much our residents, it was coming from the university, where we have now cracked down on parties. We've cracked down on parties in the park with Kentucky State. And so hopefully, we'll be able to get that under control with them and hopefully see our numbers start decreasing again. But, you know, and again, even though it's in the university, they are in our community. They're eating at our restaurants, they're at Walmart. So we do need to be safe. Do I think that leadership's doing all that they can? I will have to apply Tommy as our Director of Emergency Management. He has done an excellent job. He's done well in communicating all over the city and the county and communicating with the governor on many levels. I think that he's done what we can. I feel now, on behalf of the mayor, I think that he really put our city in a position where it should not be to allow our Director of Emergency Management now to be our interim City Manager. I think that was the worst mistake that anyone can make right now during the pandemic. It's, you know, it's sort of weird when they say, oh, well, we can spend so much money on a salary for an interim manager because of COVID. But it wasn't, you know, it was okay to fire a manager during COVID. So we have to really work through what is important, what's not, and why are we doing what we're doing. But I do think that we are trying, Tommy is trying, I bless his heart. I think he's trying all that he can. I think we are moving and grouping with our staff that's really staying on top of that, protecting our staff, protecting our city residents. But I think we are moving in the right direction. We just have to continue to wear our masks, continue to do our part as residents and know that it's not just about us, it's about those around you. So you wear your mask for everyone you see in front of you and those that are behind you.
Okay. Well, beyond affecting our community's physical health, COVID-19 is also affecting our mental health. The CDC indicates that younger adults, racial and ethnic minorities, and essential workers are reporting having experienced disproportionately worse mental health outcomes, increased substance abuse, and elevated suicidal ideation. So what efforts can be taken at the local level to address these associated mental health conditions?
Yes, and that is so sad. And I just mentioned that the other day, speaking with some parents. And also, as I was sitting in on the Kentucky High School Athletic Association, of really being one of those parents who has a teenager and has a young child, and they're so used to being part of sports. And I really pushed and I spoke up with the Kentucky High School Athletic Association at their meeting on Facebook to say, no, let these kids play. This is an outlet they have. If we continue to take everything away, you're right. The numbers will continue to rise in suicide, continue to rise in mental health, where people will get injured at home and families will break. So I feel, I feel right now that with working with the Health Department, we are trying to stay on top of those numbers. And as well, I continue to try to push to find funding where we can have our city counselor to be a full-time city counselor. We need to hire someone to do that. So we have someone there for our police, our fire department, our EMS, our first responders, and our residents to be able to call and get that type of help. Sometimes it's scary, you know, when we want to go out and look for a doctor and we really don't know what we're looking at as far as mental health. But being able to have someone who maybe we can depend on in the city and we are knowledgeable of and know they're there to help, maybe that will help encourage. But also, we as people can do our part. Reach out, speak to your children on a daily basis. Ask them what's going on. You know, one day, my son came to me, Kathy, and he was like, oh, my gosh, Mama had the worst dream, you know, that someone was chasing me, you know, and with a gun. And, you know, my kid loves the police department here. They have great relationships with them. But it was just all of this stuff that was coming up, you know. We have to talk to them. Take time. Take a walk with your kids. Buy bikes, do something. But make sure you're communicating. And if you don't have family like that, reach out to someone. I mean, just yesterday was National Suicide Day, correct? So with that, we really have to make sure we're reaching out to our community and our neighbors. Go outside and say hi. But we have to do our part as well and just continue to talk, continue to push people to want to connect.
Okay. Well, four months ago, we discussed the looming economic crisis that would result from this pandemic. And here we are. We're now seeing the negative impact. So if elected, what ideas do you have to face this crisis? And then also, what kind of tough decisions is the City Commission going to have to make about the budget?
Well, those are going to be some big, big decisions, must I say. And to be honest, Kathy, we're really not, we see that it's affecting us now, but we're really not going to see the brunt force of what this is going to do until your first or second quarter of next year, right? So we're going to be full into, you know, maybe about six months or so into the first Commission. So what I can definitely say, and where that's going to come from, I'm not sure. But what I can say is that we've already decided with certain purchases of vehicles or whatever, we've put those on the back burner unless they are truly needed. So right now, what we can do with City Commission is stop spending not necessary money. Put off things, even though we've already approved projects, we can put them off if they're not needed now. Like with the stage, for instance, right? Our stage is $160,000. We could have pressed pause on that many, many months ago and said, hey, we still want to get it, but it's just not in our budget right now. We're going to wait until after we assess our budget for COVID, and then we'll come back to the playing field. And I also think with the PR company as well. Why are we spending $5,000 for PR that we don't need right now, right? So we're frivolously spending as though COVID is not happening, and we're making these big salaries for interim managers. And it's just, it's crazy. So we really, truly need November to get here quickly so we can stop digging ourselves in a deeper hole. Because the decisions that I have today that may be able to get us out of this hole are not going to be the same decisions that we're going to have to make in six months into 2021. Because they continue to dig us in hole, continue to spend money on lights and everything else that we can put on hold and help save our city. My goal is to make sure we have a balanced budget by 2020, the end of 21, 2021, going into 2022 and getting out of this. And I will do all that I can to make sure we try not to put that effect on our, on our residents. But I can't promise that. But I will make sure that if we have to even think about raising taxes, that is the minimum as we can. But definitely, I don't want to do that to our residents only because they're hurting too. If our city's hurting, our residents are hurting even more. And putting it off on our residents is just going to make our issue even worse because we're going to have to come up with food, shelter, money to help our community.
Okay. Thank you. This summer, after the deaths of Breonna Taylor and George Floyd, our country saw a rising movement in the calls for social justice. So my question to you is, do Black Lives Matter?
Well, I'm Black and I matter. My boys are Black and they matter. So what I can say is, yes. In a sentence, yes, Black Lives Matter. Now, am I 110% on with this Big B, Big L, Big M, you know, Black Lives Matter movement? We have to do our research and make sure we're just not jumping on a bandwagon of a movement that may be just like reading legislation. You got to read all of it because something can be thrown in there. So I support that my life as a Black woman and my children's life as Black future men, they matter. They matter. And the difference is, you know, everyone's like, oh, when you say all lives matter, you just don't get it, right? And that's what, you know, it depends on who's saying that. Because Kathy, I know you personally, right? And we have a good relationship and you're in the community. And, you know, I could say for you that you think Black Lives Matter, right? So if Black Lives Matter, then for you, all lives matter. For me, all lives matter. Because I don't want a race as an issue. I don't want economic issues as a problem. So yes, Black Lives Matter. And the reason why it's a push now is because we are being killed at a higher rate than any other race right now at the hands of bad police officers. We are, you know, having disparities across the board on why should one race have a better insurance than the other or live in a different area? And yes, this all started many years ago, whether it was redlining and all of these different things that have affected us. It is time for us to realize and own up to what happened many years ago. Let's come up with a solution in our own areas and in our own cities and try to move this forward and say, we do not claim that that will happen from here on out in Frankfurt. We welcome, we love everyone in our community because everyone brings so much to our community. So yes, Black Lives Matter, but all of your lives matter to me. And I will fight to make sure that people are seeing that Black Lives do matter right now. And if it was the other way around at a high rate that Caucasians or Latinos or anyone else was being killed, I would be on your side to let you know that whites, Caucasians, Asians, you matter. But right now, I want everyone to get together and show us, just by the rally marks, the unity marks that I helped coordinate with a small group of people, you showed that Black Lives Matter in Frankfurt, and I was very proud to stand in front of you. I'm getting chills. You, it just warmed my heart. And that is another reason why I love Frankfurt and why I'm here and why I want to continue serving you, so.
Well, what steps do you think you should be taking here to help ensure the equitable racial justice locally?
I guess some of the steps is really truly looking at our timeframe. Like I said earlier, you know, dealing with Dolly Graham and things. We have to make sure we're across the board and communication. Communication is our issue here in Frankfurt. To me, it's not so much a Black and white thing or really a race issue. It's communication. There are groups here that are hosting meetings at the library to talk about race relations, and only Caucasians show up. Well, if we're talking about race, we need people sitting at the table to talk about that. But at the same time, we also need to make sure that we are meeting in a safe place. And so one of the things I'm working with now with Kentucky State University is called a healing center on campus. And we're working on that to where it could be a healing center for our community, where we can have these hard talks. But when we enter in that building, it's a healing place. Catricia, Kathy, you that are watching, if you walk in that building, you are in a safe place to talk. If you say something that may not be well-taken by myself or someone else, there's a correction there. And that's not to be held against you. That's where we build, that's where we learn, that's where we move forward. So we have to create that. We have to connect and create what we want and continue to live that. Let's not just have around the table and then nothing comes from it, right?
Sure. Okay. Yeah. Moving on, as funding has been reduced for Downtown Frankfurt, Inc. and KCDC, do you think this minimizes the effectiveness of their missions to attract and support businesses here in our community? And is there anything more the city can do to support these agencies?
Well, right now, it is a little bit of a sticky slope, I think, right now, in why some Commissioners and some don't want to support or do want to support in the amount that they're supporting. I do think that they're both important entities to our downtown. However, I do think we need to gather all of these groups together. We need to sit down and know what the purpose of, what the purpose for each entity is. We really need to make that clear. Because a lot of times, it becomes very sludgy where it seems like that they're running together, they're overlapping, they're doing duties that maybe the other is. We need to communicate more. So I feel that sitting down with them, getting a complete goal of what we want, definitely dealing with parcels B, parcels A, B, and C, I think moving forward with that, we have to communicate. We have to make sure we're not doing the other person's job. And I think, yes, they continue need to be, they do need to continue being funded, but I think we need to have a goal. And I think DFI, I think within the times that has changed hands, it's set and it's sort of idling now, right? And so within the idolization, it moves away from what the community and the business leaders downtown want. It's time to give it back to the business leaders. What is it you want to see in Downtown Frankfurt? What is it you want to change? What can I do as City Commission and the Commission with the mayor and the City Manager? What can we do to help make this easier for you and to bring in other people?
Okay. Yeah. What is your plan to address Frankfurt's low-income housing problem? And if reelected, would you support a city ordinance which adopts the Uniform Residential Landlord-Tenant Act, like other cities have done?
I would probably say yes, definitely on that. And what can we do? It's about going out and finding, finding the homes, making sure they're affordable, making sure there's an easy process for people to take over these homes that have been so desolate, right? I know a couple of people that are trying, and it's like taking months and years for them to get access to this house that is ran down or has rats under it. It shouldn't be that way, right? It shouldn't, and we should be helping. Because as we're building up and recreating, it's making the community, number one, safe, because it keeps rodents and things of that nature out. They could be bringing diseases in these communities. And it keeps lauders out as well that are just lauding and things. But at the same time, it makes them become more prideful of their community, and they want to take care of it. So if you build up this home that looks amazing, someone else is going to want to take care of their home down the street, right? And so I think we also need to support those people that are willing to put their money and their time into these. We also need to provide more grants as we're doing. We continue to put grants into, you know, money for people to build up their homes. But how can we do that? I mean, take for instance, I think it's Danny Strong. He is, you know, going to get some property and he's redoing them. And, you know, I think he got a lot of slack on the last building that he was doing downtown. But the issue is that it needed to be revitalized. And yes, that does mean the rent for that will increase. But I can tell you with working with them and looking at their paperwork, their rent will still be lower than some rent in areas in Frankfurt after they put all that time into redoing that building. So I think we definitely need to support more people like that, support our developers, bring in more people, and stop putting so much red ink on these processes and taking months to do it.
Okay. Yeah. Guessing I know your answer on this next question, but I'll ask it anyway. Would you support the expeditious completion of the Thoroughbred Trail? And what can city leadership do to foster a more partnering relationship with Kentucky State University?
Yes, I definitely foster that quickness that we can do this trail. I'm a big supporter of that trail. I think that it would be great for Kentucky State University as well as our residents to get downtown and up the hill. I actually just spoke about this other day to the interim city manager and saying, hey, I want to know where we're at with this. I want to break ground. We need to be breaking ground on this. So that's something I have been pushing away. But as you know, that when things don't go certain commissioners' way, it gets pushed underneath the rug. And I think with the naming of this, it's sort of been pushed underneath the rug. I know when I brought it back to the table to rename it after this long, horrible name, the community wanted Kentucky State in that name. And I had to force for it to be put back on the agenda and bring it up and make that motion to move it for it to be Thoroughbred Trail as the community, majority of the community wanted. And so I think it's time for us, just like you said, how can we make things better in our community, get things done? Why are we still talking about this dag on trail, months and months and years and years later? We should have already been revitalizing, right? So I think it's needed. It needs to happen now. And how can we work on that relationship with Kentucky State, I believe was your second part? And that's doing things that we say we're going to do, like the Thoroughbred Trail. We've been talking to the students about it forever, but it's not happening. You know, we've got to make sure we're owning up on our part. Also, what I've shared with the community is sometimes working with the university as a whole can be very difficult. But if we break it down in small entities, like working with the students whom we love, we absolutely love their talents they bring to our community and all, let's start with the students because they need help. And one thing that I can say, just the other day, I had a student coming from Atlanta. He's from Africa, and I've gotten a call on his transport in from Africa. And it said that he did not have a microwave or a refrigerator. And they called me and was like, can you do anything? I think you could get things done, so I'm calling you. You're pretty good at that. So I did. I put it out on Facebook, made a couple of calls. I've never seen the like of Frankfurt citizens saying, hey, I have a microwave. Or, hey, I have this. Please, I want to help out all that I can. But also, you know, even the alumni jumped in, and I think they sent me right at $300, like within maybe 45 minutes through Cash App to help buy this young man, not only a refrigerator or microwave, but much, many more things. Now I have a list of community members who want to give items to Kentucky State. So I think the relationship wants to be there. We just have to maybe take it in portions and not as a university as a whole.
I got you. Well, we have run out of time. I don't know if you heard my point. But so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to you, let you speak directly to the viewers and tell them why you're the best candidate for City Commission. Feel free to ask them for their vote and tell them how they can find out more information about you.
Great. Well, thank you so much for having me, Kathy. And we truly appreciate the Frankfurt Plan Board in doing this because, hey, now in this time of elections and campaigning, it's totally different. So we definitely applaud you guys and all that you're doing for our community. So thank you. But I will just say, we as Americans, and I sort of wrote a little something here for the end, we are Americans and Frankfortonians together. We can continue to hold on, hold our officials to a high standard of one of integrity and trust, transparency that will be at the forefront of our discussions. My Plan Board is to continue serving you with the utmost respect as a leader, fight for the hard decisions, ask questions, and be involved and engage with you, residents, staff, and provide and update policies that best serve you and those wanting to do business and relocate to Frankfurt. I would be honored to serve another two years with you. I am truly excited. I have been blessed over the last 18 months. I look forward to the next four. But I want to continue being part of this community. I want to continue moving you forward. And you will have my word, as you have for the past 18, is I will do all that I can. I will make sure that you are running this community and this city as you should. And I am ready to continue help and be the, just put in the really go-to and fight for this community for the next two years. I've gained 18 months of experience. I'm truly, truly excited, and I would hope that you'd have me back. So please go to my website at www.catriciaphorfrankfurt.com. Again, that's catriciaphorfrankfurt.com. And there you can find out a little bit more about my platform, who I am. Sign up to get a sign, sign up to communicate, to do maybe a fundraiser. You could even donate. But I thank you so much for your time. I appreciate Frankfurt Plan Board, and I appreciate you, those that are taking time to watch. Get to know your city commission and those that are running for your candidates so you have the best people serving you. So thank you, Frankfurt. And I do ask for your vote in November and all of October, from October 13th, I think it's October 13th, until November. I appreciate you and I want your vote again. I want to serve you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Catricia. We appreciate your time today. So that brings us to the end of this edition of Meet the Candidates. We'll see you next time.